Good evening. Today is August 23rd at 6:32 PM and this is a regular scheduled meeting for the City of Rockport Council. This meeting will be held using video conferencing applications soon. An in-person meeting will be conducted at the Rockport Service Center. Temporary suspension of the Open Meetings Act to off telephone or video conference public meetings has been granted by Governor Ed. These actions are being taken to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 by avoiding meetings that bring people into a group setting in accordance with Section 418.016 of the Texas Code. Video conferencing capabilities will be utilized to allow individuals to address the City Council. Members of the public have participated in the meeting in what we view as a... There is a link on the City website. I'd like to take a roll call. See what's with council members present. Ward one. Ward one. Ward two. Ward two.
Hold on one moment, sir. We're trying to unmute them.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
So we have representation from the Ward 2, 3, 4, and the Mayor. I recognize we have a forum called Media Ward. Please rise as Councilmember Cunningham leads us into pledge allegiance. This ended. Here you go. Hey, keep... Just wanted to mute around here. Okay, don't touch him up. Oh, don't touch him up. Take him off again.
I don't know what it's doing.
He's... He's muted behind you.
I'm muted, so I'm not muted.
You're good now, just...
I'm muted, but I'm muted.
You're good. Go.
I'm actually over there. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd like to take a couple of seconds and remember that this time three years ago, Harvey was just approaching the barrier islands and we were under already hurricane-force winds. We were under those winds for eleven and a half hours. And we've come a very, very long way. We made some terrific progress. We were very blessed that we had no death directly from the storm. But right now, we've got Laura threatening our neighbors to the north and southeastern Texas and Louisiana. And I'd like to just... I'd like for them to know that we're praying for them. And we know what it's like and we'll do anything we can to help them. I believe that Mayor Pro Tembea wanted to say something also. Can I unmute him? Mr. Beal, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, same. Just wanted to echo that, yes, everybody's in our prayers and obviously we're on our third anniversary. And a lot of people, I can see a lot of things on Facebook today, you know, especially when we're about, I don't know, lower twenty-four hours or lower than up in the Texas and Louisiana border. So yes, they're all in our prayers. Let's put all that in.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three. Presentation. Promotion of Officer Nathaniel Ward to the rank position of Detective within the Rockport Police Department. Chief, are you going to handle this?
Just tell it right here so they can... Sure.
You might have to wipe them off.
I'll do this part of it and then we'll... So periodically, we have positions in the police department of higher rank and the rank structure, you know, up above patrol officer. And we have a couple of openings for detective and it's a competitive process. And in that process, patrol officer Nathaniel Ward was chosen number one. Again, a competitive process to being promoted to the rank of detective. It's been effective for a little while. We had some logistical issues with the coronavirus, with the hurricane, everything that sort of follows. And so finally, we've gotten to be able to make this possible. So if I could get Sir Nathaniel Ward to come up with me real quick. We'll do this part. And with that, he goes to the rank of detective and will move into our criminal investigation division and begin doing the follow-up investigations that patrol officer takes a report, takes a call, write a report on a crime. And that report affords through the police department. And then you'll get over to that and follow the investigation and follow the criminal charges with the district attorney office. So congratulations. I'm trying to get the senator in that area. Congratulations. And then Ceremonies, here you go. It's a big part. It's a sort of family affair and there's a lot of sacrifice. He's now on call and so symbolic of that, his spouse will come up and pin his new badge on his uniform shirt. Direct pressure on him. I told her 20 bucks for blood.
Congratulations.
I'll go solve some crimes. Good job.
I'm also going to read something here from Detective Ward. Detective Nathaniel Ward is working for the Rockport Police Department since April 14, 2016. During his time in the Army, he has served as a patrol officer and has completed SWAT school, sniper school, international police mountain biking school, instructor school, field training officer school. Detective Ward holds an intermediate police officer license from the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and is working towards a bachelor's degree in business administration. But prior to employment with the department, Detective Ward served infantryment for eight years in the Army National Guard and deployed to multiple countries. Detective Ward transitioned to the Air Force in 2011 and served as an aircraft mechanic on F-16 fighter aircraft until attending the Alamo Area Council Governor's Police Academy in 2015. Detective Ward now serves in a part-time function with the Air National Guard in Joint Base San Antonio-Lacan and as an aircraft mechanic. Detective Ward is present this evening with his wife Cheryl. I thank you for your service and for your commitment to not only our country but also the City of Rockport. We really, really appreciate what you do for the city and family. Take care of Cheryl. Item number four. Presentation to the Spirit of Rockport Award. Rockport Volunteer Fire Department. Let's go back over the background of the Spirit of Rockport Award. It was developed to recognize individuals and organizations who exemplify a unique spirit of rockport. Nominees are those who go above and beyond to make our community a better place. Nominations are renewed by the Cesco Centennial Committee, with awards presented throughout the year at City Council meetings and other events. Each recipient will receive a limited edition commemorative medal that was designed specifically for the Cesco Centennial. Tonight's award goes to the Rockport Volunteer Fire Department. As their name implies, it's an all-volunteer organization. Since 1885, Rockport Volunteer Fire Department has dedicated itself to saving lives and protecting property. For their mission statement, they are committed to providing for our citizens the best possible service in a courteous profession and cost-effective manner to assure that every person who contacts the fire department receives satisfaction to the best of our abilities to achieve this continuous education, training, and community involvement while maintaining the safest working environment possible. And I believe Chief Sims. Chief Sims, you want to come forward please? Under the offices of Fire Chief Steve Sims, Assistant Fire Chief Matthew Grimes, and Captains Aaron Guerrero, Jillian Cox, Jill Carpal, and John Carpal, the sixty-five firefighters and members of the Fire Department, let's face that way to receive, provided vital service to our community which not only saved lives and property, but also reduced the cost of homework and rental insurance for our residents. We encourage residents to support and become involved in this incredible organization. Because of the number of honor reads in the pandemic, we will not distribute the medals in person. They will be delivered to the fire department for distribution at the weekly Thursday meetings. The City of Rockport is accepting additional nominations for the Spirit of Rockport Award. Presentation will be at future House meetings. Chief, thank you so much for your dedication. Your team is terrific. I know they go through a lot, especially in our, well, right now, the summer, so you guys will enjoy out there. Fighting the heat and the fire.
To them, it's one thing.
Yes, sir. But we really appreciate that you've made statements. I think we have the medals here. You want to bring them up? Please for you to be up on Thursday to meet. It's a miniature pack for everyone in the fire department.
Hurricane Harvey downsided our department somewhat, but we have built back up. We're good, back to where we were at before Harvey, so got some really new members, young people coming in.
Excellent.
They all appreciate it.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Item number five, presentation. Item 197, Cesco Centennial Podcast. I believe Mr. Peru and Miss Henry have us.
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. This is our sixth presentation of time capsule items and from 1970. And tonight's information shows you some certificates of shares that they sold in advance. So people in advance were getting involved to be financed, to help finance the time capsule and the other things going on at the time. Excuse me, not the time capsule, but the 100-year celebration. Additionally, the Proclamations Charter and Certificates of the Centennial Bells and Jolly Rogers. They look like a lot of fun. The Jolly Rogers, they had to fill special hair effects or beards and things of that nature, so it was a lot of fun. And of course, the Sentinel Bells had to wear their hair a certain way or no makeup and certain dress attire. So it looked like it was a lot of fun and I wish we could have done a little bit more this year, but COVID did it. So we're doing the best we can and enjoying what we've got, what they were able to do 50 years ago. And we have some more in two weeks.
Good. I know that five years ago, we set up a sinking fund. We were establishing committees. At the time, Mayor Wax was looking to do a huge party for the City of Rockport. And all of our local, of course, our neighbors and all of them would be invited. But politics kind of changed things, so maybe we can find someone else to celebrate. Maybe the interco. I keep looking for some pictures. Thought I saw my approach, but maybe not.
We do have some pictures, some of those person future presentations.
With some of the names that you look at, I believe some of their offspring are now prominent in the community. Does that recognize names in fact in these lists? These charters were distributed throughout the community. There's people from, oh, they write for Rockport. So it was a big, big celebration. If you haven't gone on the website, you can listen to the audio of the charters. One of the presentations, that's been very interesting.
From this one, you've got Gary Howard, or patrol commander, and his dad, who was manager of ATB.
Mr. Beal has scanned up.
I was just gonna say that Google's name is on there.
Okay.
Yeah, there's Gary Howard right there. That Howard. Is that all of them?
The Wooly Wools check. Ah, there's a red.
I can name picture. I'll available on the website. Might want to pick them up. You can probably call them.
And I believe Vicky's putting them on the historical page too.
Heavy wage riders. Interesting names back in 1970. And that's Little Pirates, Lamar Fire Department. Is that it? Is that it? Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Six. Citizens to be Heard. At this time, written comments received by four people on the day of the meeting on any subject that is not on the agenda will be read by the mayor and entered into the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council with their questions using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be caused for the chair to terminate the defender's right to speak. Now, I've got a couple of reforms here. And I don't know if Dave Foster is on the meeting. He wanted me to read this in. I don't know if he joined me or not.
I don't see that name sort of here.
This is Citizens to be Heard, its own bond issuance. Mayor, this is a council member. We are talking a total tax increase of $3 a year. Please read on. In the minutes of the July 23rd council meeting, financial advisor for the city, Bob Henderson, explained, "Over the past several years, the city has been able to pay down outstanding debt resulting in a decrease in the Henderson sinking INS tax rate. And this increase in tax rate resulting expected in fiscal year 2021 provides an opportunity to issue approximately $20 million certificates of obligation bonds, COs, in the late summer of 2020, with minimal impact on the city's INS tax rates." Mr. Henderson went on to present that fiscal year 2019 through 2020 tax rate is approximately .1720 and that proposed CO issuance will increase the tax rate approximately .012 to approximately .185, substantially lower than in the previous fiscal year. Neighbors, let's put this into context. For residents with a taxable value of $250,000, that's a $3.07 cent annual increase in taxes per year. $3. Let's let that sink in. Isn't it worth $3 a year to help our city go to new city hall, take us into the future? Isn't it worth $3 a year to have a great facility for our youth to house events and keep them safe? Isn't it worth $3 a year to support our police with needed equipment? Isn't it worth $3 a year to help secure the right-of-way for utilities to build a new Kiellegro Bridge to safety of our residents? Isn't it worth $3 a year to have better storm drainage and street repairs? Let's let our elected officials do their job. They've done it responsibly, responsibly, in our best interest for years. Irailing this bond issuance will hurt our city and our residents. I strongly support the City of Rockport and its efforts to responsibly raise funds needed through the bond issuance process. Thank you, Dave Foster. I have another one from Katn Snyder. I don't know if she's on. She asked, says, "I support our city officials in the bond to the neighborhood of Rockport to go to much-needed courthouse and city hall as well as allow the city to move forward with the Kiellegro Bridge in an area of tremendous concern, an area of tremendous concern for public safety." Please add this note right in the City Council meeting, meeting records on too. Thank you so much, Katn Snyder, 7th candidate for Rockport, Texas. I have another participation form from Mr. George Rikers, Kiellegro Market, Rockport. I don't know if he's on. I believe he wanted this read in also. Dear Mayor and councilmembers, South Rockport neighbors, workers, workers, and that who voted unanimously for the amendment to have zoning in South Rockport remain the same as it is. Only seven years ago, we worked with the mayor, Todd Pearson, to have a change from home to hotel motel for residential. Since then, the growth of residential homes has been amazing. There's no definition for mixed-use zoning. Sounds like anything works. We don't want a can residence opening next to our across the street from us or a game room either. Please leave our zoning alone. If a tea room or bed and breakfast or anything else must go, let them apply for a special use permit. We are happy with our current zone. Thank you. Jim Gottfried, President. Sharon Smith, Vice President. Beth Smith, Secretary. George Rikers, Treasurer. Rita Kennedy, Director. Maureen Winkleman, Director. Fitna Mule, Minister of Director. Raymond F. Patel, Director. I have one other form that is on Agenda Item 19, so we'll, I believe this is going to be full of addresses on the Agenda Item 19. Moving on to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be reviewed by the City Council and will be enacted by a motion. There will be no second discussion. There will be no second discussion of these items unless the council members' sole request, in which event the item will be removed and consent agenda will be considered to be on the agenda. Council, does anyone want to remove anything? I'll take a roll call. Ward one.
I'm trying to get them unmuted, sir.
Okay.
I have to unmute them each time they mute themselves.
Ward two.
And Mike Sasey is here.
Is he there?
He is now.
Let's go back to Ward one.
There he is.
Aye.
No, you wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Ward three.
No, is it possible to leave the council members unmuted as the Army only might be at the behest of unmuted each time we're...
I don't believe that's possible.
We can. We muted everybody in the past because there have been problems with ambient noise for multiple nights. But we can, as long as people don't have noise in the background, we don't...
Can I mute myself at my own discretion then?
Sure. Sure, that would help. If we unmute you, then each member would mute and unmute a lot. That would save a lot of time, yes, but...
That's my normal practice. Thank you. I have nothing to take off.
Nothing to take off agenda. And Ward four?
No, I'm not.
I don't either. I'll entertain a motion.
Salute.
I have a motion by Ms. Catman, the second.
Beal.
By Mr. Beal. Yes, look for a second. Ms. Hatt?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by... Do you prefer to disagree? All in favor? Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item number 12. Conduct a public hearing on the extension of a moratorium on submission, acceptance, processing, and approval necessary for the creation and development of flats, construction, facilities related to recreational vehicle parts for land within the City of Rockport. Time is 6:58. Public hearing is over. Anyone who wish to comment on the moratorium extension? If there's anyone out on the Zoom meeting that did go to the bottom of the screen and raised their hand, we'll recognize them. And to do that, you click on the bottom of the screen. You'll see a function where you can raise your hand, comment. We'll give a few minutes here to see if anybody would like to comment. One more call for comments on the public hearing on the extension of a moratorium for RV parts.
Mike? Do you want that?
Okay, last call of comments. Here at 7:00 PM, the public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number 13. Liberating Act on First Reading of an Ordinance Staying in Moratorium for 120 Days on Submission, Acceptance, Processing, and Approval Necessary for the Creation and Development of Flats, Construction, or Facilities Related to Recreational Vehicle RV Parts or Manufactured Housing Parts for Land Within the City of Rockport, Providing the Safety Clause, Providing the Severability Clause, Finding and Determining that the Meetings at Which the Ordinance Was Had Open to the Public as Required by Law, Providing the Effectively. This is a, an extension of a moratorium we had in place. I believe this is the fifth, sixth extension.
Four.
Fourth? I think it's number four, Mayor.
Four, I'm sorry. We have, between this and the extension of all the disaster generations, I lose count. But pending adoption of the comprehensive plan, we want to establish a vote until we finally put in the public and the deliberations in act.
Mayor, we do anticipate this to be the intention of the moratorium. The building and development department is currently working on a draft ordinance to be brought in conjunction with a recommendation on a final review of the comprehensive plan. And it is our intention to come forth with an ordinance on development of RV parts within our community before this moratorium expires again.
Before, do you have something done before the 120 days?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Council questions, comments?
With respect to the comprehensive plan, as you know, I would recommend that we should give the public plenty of opportunity to comment. So I'm not arguing that... we should give the public plenty of opportunity to comment, so I'm not arguing that, you know, we should not give the moratorium in consideration of the master plan. But I don't see anywhere on the master plan where it actually addresses RV parks, what the future land use map, which is what we would be guided by, there isn't any category for RVs, so I'm sure the hang up is that, of is that the comprehensive.
There is a section of the comprehensive plan that does address RV and other, other areas of our community that we'll be looking at as we come to you with the draft ordinance.
It's not for the land use map?
It's not, it's not exclusively tied to the future land use map, but the future, again, we'll talk about future land use map in another section here, but it is not exclusively tied to the future land use.
Okay, thank you.
And again, this goes back to after Harvey, we had, we were thinking of developing RV parks.
People, people, people waited.
We're gonna put it on every street corner within the city of town, and we had, we had to wait just without any moratorium, really stop, we'd have been covered up. So, any more comments, questions? So, I'll entertain a motion.
Salute.
Second.
I have a motion of Mayor Pro Tembea, the second, from Mr. Sasey. Any further comment? All in favor, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four. Ward four.
Aye, aye.
And Mayor, aye, thank you. Item fourteen. Deliberate an act on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Rockport, Texas, extending the declaration of global disaster Hurricane Hannah for the period of August twenty-fifth through September twenty-second, twenty-twenty, establishing rules and regulations for duration of disaster, restricting certain activities, and establishing penalties for violations. This goes back to making sure that any expenses that the city prefers due to Hurricane Hannah will be reimbursed, will be, have our statute of protection in place. We've done this several times before. Counsel, any questions, comments?
No. No. Salute.
I have a second. I have a motion from Mr. Cunningham, the second, from Mr. Sasey. Any further discussion? All in favor, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item fifteen. Deliberate an act on a resolution authorizing city manager, mayor, post, and attorney for Austin to point zero, the zero point five five acre of land on bracing rational lots twenty-one and twenty-two, block twenty-eight, Denver Heights, city of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, according to flat recorded volume one, page nine, flat records of Aransas County, Texas, also known as sixteen twenty Amahondros. Don't know who's got this one?
I've got it.
Okay, Mr. Ruth.
We've been approached by joint property owner to purchase this remnant piece of property. You'll see there's a outline in blue. When enterprise was put in, this, to take those two, five eight zero nine six and one seven four zero seven, that went across going west, well, the wrong way in, and the little tiny pieces of the east side of those blocks remaining. Of course, they're not big enough to do anything, it's point zero five five of the nature. So, in order to dispose of the property, we can't just give it to somebody, we have to put it up for auction. You can see this is directly across from where the school district administration office has used to be, and right next to where that mobile home burned a couple of times last year.
Several, several times.
And behind the baseball.
Right, the yellow box just, just fall up right there.
Right. To the right. So, just need authorization to dispose of the property, obviously not, not again, we're ever gonna use again, and not use to anybody other than one of the joint property owners.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I don't have any. Salute.
I have a motion, please, Mr. Beas, the second, from Mr. Sasey. Any further discussion? All in favor, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
And Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item sixteen. Deliberate an act on selection of regional level candidates for Texas municipal league health benefits pool director, pool board director. Counsel, you, in your packet, had a information on this, you also had some items on the candidates for the TML Health and School Board of Directors. We have, I believe, three people that it puts their name in contention. Blake Petrich, who's the mayor of TML City of the Madoff, the NATO, excuse me. Rosemary Vega, councilperson from the city of Woodsboro. And Mary Weismer, who's all over the city of Goldenhead. I don't know if everyone's read the, the bios. This portion of the TML Health Benefits Pool is where we get our city, insurance for our city employees. I'm very familiar with a lot of people on this board, I served with them, they belong to the TML board, and I work with a lot of people, not necessarily all these folks, but I am familiar with them. But as far as the rest of the people on board, I know. Any comments on the, the candidates?
Mr. Patras was appointed, originally appointed to fill vacancy on the board, and at that time, there were three candidates, himself, Kimberly Henry, and Kevin Coru. He's been on there for four, four years.
Mr. Patras also had put his name in, for those of you who remember last week, at our TML virtual meeting, he had, right, I think he was first vice president, and he was beat out of that position by Mayor Sturo from, from Forts. I've met him. They're all good people, but I've, I've known Mr. Patras.
He, he's been active on TML.
For a long time.
I don't know the other two, but, maybe from Goldenhead, obviously, they're better background, I could see that a lot of people.
So, don't know, any comments from anybody?
My question really goes to the city manager, since you're the line of good deals, the health pool that the city makes part of here at your TML. I guess my attitude is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Is it broke, does it need fixing? Because if it is, Mr. Patras is already on the committee, might need to be replaced, but if it's been working well for us and what we expected, then he was erst.
I, I would be fine with voting for Mr. Patras returning to the board. Yeah, I, I concur.
Any other comments? We'll just go by, by ward, ward one.
I have no comments.
Ward two.
Uh, no comments. I'm, I'm, I mean, is this gonna, I'm obviously, this was submitted prior to him doing what we did last year, so.
Correct.
Is he gonna have time for this? Is this gonna hinder anything, or?
Well, he didn't, he, he didn't win last week, so he's got time, he's been in this position all along, so it's, it's not anything extra.
Okay, I'm getting confused with the other gentleman.
Right.
It was the second vice, okay.
Okay. And, word three, ward four.
Well, why is he here? Go with that one.
So, we're in conference with Mr. Patras. Let's go by, let's take a, a roll call, ward one. I need a motion, I'm sorry, I need a motion to.
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Blake Patras, mayor of TML City of the Madoff.
Sir, good.
Motion for Mr. Beas, the second, from Mr. Cunningham. Roll call, ward, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item seventeen. Deliberate an act on selection of board trustee candidates places one through four for Texas Municipal League, Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool. Similar exercise, we, in our packet, we had, I believe, we only had one individual replaced in one. That's Mr. Robert Herrera, city manager of Civil, Texas. In place two, we had two, Chris Armocosta, who's the city commissioner for the city of Hitchcock, and Mr. John Bus Bullock, who's the incumbent, he's the mayor of Henderson since twenty nineteen. And place three, we have Mr. George Hyde, who's the city attorney for the city of Wataga, Roy E. Man, who's the city alderman, position three, for the city of West Columbia, and Jeffrey Snyder, the incumbent, city manager for the city of Plainview. My only comments are that I serve with these people. We have, that's, that's all of them, right? No. Oh, I'm sorry, place four. Robert Hawke, who's the, the incumbent, he's the city manager for the city of Tomville, Dave Martin, city council member, current mayor of TML City of Houston, and Kimberly Meismer, executive director for general operations for Curda, she oversees human resources, and Sean O'Red, the city manager of the city of Loma S. I have been in meetings with the incumbents, I have no problem with them. The, the intergovernmental risk pool runs very, very well. It's low managed, low handled, financially very, very stable. I personally have no issue returning incumbents. But I'll go through, four comments, comments?
I, I agree, no. It sounds like they're going to break.
Ward two.
I agree, I was just, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know them personally, I don't know them, I'm just reading from, it's kind of hard to do this, and you just have someone that can read all the, you know, actually.
Right.
Listen to the, something from the candidates itself, but if you work with the incumbent, then I'm not bad as well, and you're okay.
Ward three.
Well, I, I have to say, I have a soft spot in my heart in place three for George Hyde, who's an attorney. And my understanding is that the liability pool is about lawsuits, liability lawsuits, protecting cities lawsuits. But I note that Mr. Snyder, the incumbent, has only been serving for two years, more to, this is another incumbent here. Mr. Hawke, he's only been on for one, and then a turnover, so if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I'll be happy to go with him.
Ward four.
I agree with, fellow councilmen here, I mean, it's really hard to base it off, I was just playing for, I'm not sure, so I'm, we, we are still good to go.
I'm going to, since I've got everything written down here, I'll make a motion that we, we're going to do, we're going to put the names of Robert Herrera, John Bus Bullock, Jeffrey Snyder, and Robert Hawke on our bill to return. So, all it is, is a motion. Looking for second. Second, Mr. Beas, any further discussion? Take a roll call, ward, ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number eighteen. Deliberate an act on proposed, proposed by Aransas County to defend the open road attachment mitigation project of the city of Rockport. This project was originated with long-term care, this was actually part of the Aransas County Resilience, Resilience Initiative. Back about two thousand fifteen, we started on looking at, at short protection. As funds became available, grants became available after Harvey, this project was funding, had a funding purpose, there had been some pre-engineering done on it. Project would start, at least in our area, from basically trailer and go north within our jurisdiction to about the White House Hotel, except for that piece of the counter property that built it, its own private, and it would start over the other side of Fulton, and then head up towards Cantini, that part. Project had been out there for months and months and months, had, had set up public comment, sailed out of power for late in the game. Some residents took a look at the project, and they, they actually argued against it with the county and the navigation district. They're not happy with the way it was engineered, designed, they were afraid it was gonna change the look of the water, they had some, some barriers that sit out in the bay about a hundred yards offshore, and I believe they were supposed to be four foot in length, or in height, so the tide, low tide, it'd be sticking out of the water. They were also afraid of creche, in other words, a beach building back up, which would fish out from the long Fulton Beach Road. The county's already spent quite a bit of money on this, and they basically got a letter last week, I believe, they sent us a letter where the county has offered the other entities to take over, they've offered it to the navigation district, the city of Rockport, the town of Fulton. We can only potentially look at what is within our jurisdiction, again, trailer to the White House. But if we took over this project, we have to start completely over, all the engineering would have to be done again, a brand, a new brand administrator would have to be chosen, the match money would have to come from the city, again, for that piece. Likewise with Fulton, and Navigation District was entertaining taking up anything that fell outside of the city limits of, of the town of Fulton and the city of Rockport. The issue with Navigation District, they don't have the authority to walk on the road, roads, Fulton Beach Road was gonna be razed and footed, and then the right part, put a long beach shoreline cap with a, pretty much a walking trail type thing, and then these barriers would be offshore. This, the grant, I forget how much the grant was, but it was substantial, so they have this done. At this point, the county doesn't want to pursue it. I did have, the HECU, Kevin and I had a follow-up call with John Strachan earlier this week to confirm, he told me last week, last week, he said if, if no one picked up this project, T-DAM was willing to put it on the shelf and wait until it could hustle to surface again later on. That would take some different engineering and things, but at this point, the county is looking for an answer by September fourteenth. the, the county is looking for an answer by September fourteenth. There's no way we could even, I believe, no way we could even, we could even mobilize engineering in time to find out what's involved, or we, we're still taking up other projects right now just to even investigate this project. Mr. Donohue, I don't think your team has looked at this at all?
We, we have looked at it, uh, and again, like you said, Mayor, I don't believe that we would have the time nor the capacity with our place being so full to oversee a project of this size, especially since the majority resides outside of our jurisdiction. I would like to say that, you know, this being the third anniversary of Hurricane Harvey, and that, you know, our community received so much help from our state and federal partners as we went through this process to apply for these grants to help our community recover. And, you know, I have over thirty-five years of emergency management, emergency response, and now three good solid years of long-term recovery. And it's a shame that we're at this point in the recovery for our community, and the roadblock that we're encountering is our own citizens. My concern is being involved in this process for the last three years, and being involved with FEMA, with TECS, with T-DAM for over thirty-five years, that we're giving our community a bad name. And unfortunately, we're handicapping ourselves for the future. If we accept the monies and don't spend the monies on the projects that were approved, those monies are held back, and other communities could benefit from those monies. So the next time around, when we tell them to apply for a grant, and we haven't followed the rules, followed the procedures, and spent the money correctly, it could prevent us from getting approved for future grants. And I'm very, very concerned about that. And as I stated before, I never thought that after three years, that the roadblock that we would be facing are members of our own community. That's very disheartening to me.
And we're seeing everybody down not only on this project, but other.
Other projects. We have projects that are out there, and if we don't move on them, we stand a chance to lose the federal funds, the state funds, to rebuild our community.
And the opposition is, is coming from people that never had any time in meetings, the hours and hours, probably months worth of meetings that we've attended over the last three years, working with our partners to secure these, this funding and grant. It's a different time.
So, uh, this project with respect to the city would have been in word three. So I have been following it particularly closely. Uh, the county, the, this particular project only ran from trailer up to about Aaron's Ritz. And the county is now managing that to the City of Fulton for its property, and to the Rockport for our portion, which as you identified is trailer to the Lighthouse Inn. Where we had no objection. There were no, no property owners belongs in the city who raised the problem about what breakwater and the, you know, the, the green coastal resiliency aspect would look like down in our portion. But with the county handing it to us over thirty days, uh, we really don't have the time to break out our portion of the project from the city, from the town of Fulton's part of the project. Um, we don't have time to be able to work out an arrangement with the Nav District who has concerns about how you keep that area between the shore and breakwater clean and maintained, which would be their responsibility. And we don't have the matching funds because we were not advised early enough to be able to budget for that or include it within our certificate of obligation. Uh, my understanding is that the best that can happen at this point is it gets shelved if and when T-DAM or GLO eventually might have some money available again. We might have an opportunity to dust it off and try again. Uh, but in the meantime, it's a project that is sorely needed for Fulton Beach Road. Uh, as you saw the erosion that happened there, uh, just because of little Hurricane Hannah, which was not much of a storm. And my understanding is, in fact, that's taken out enough of the roadway alongside, uh, Fulton management that already the prospect of being able to put pedestrian and bikeway alongside roadway, uh, was pretty much compromised and, or at least a risk. So altogether, it's a very disappointing outcome for a project that was really needed and that the City of Rockport property owners never seemed to, uh, have an objection to.
And what's, what's interesting is what you referred to as that little small storm, Hurricane Hannah, literally destroyed, ran, melted the, uh, this up front little counter property. Broken, places a three marsh showings, undermined in the back. Uh, it's, it's gone off small.
Well, we, we could, which is kind of proof to the principle that Marsh McDonald was presenting to us last December. But the reason this is set up with breakwaters twenty feet out and with a shallow space with, with, uh, cordgrass and other, uh, you know, marsh grasses in it is because that will lower the velocity of the waves. And putting up the seawall won't do that. You can see proof of that in what happened to the, or, kind of seawall. I would point out that the county intends to look, to move forward, look into moving forward, uh, above the town of Fulton in the stretch between about, uh, Aaron's Ritz to Contiki, and pursue that as a separate project. I think to the tune of about six and a half, seven million dollars potentially. So that may reappear up there, but that's not going to do anything for our needs in the City of Rockport.
Right. Any, uh, any other comments?
No. I agree with the fact that it's just, it shouldn't have waited this long. I mean, you should, you know, the eleventh hour is just not the time to do that. Uh, there was plenty of time to do, to deal with this. Like you were saying, it just doesn't look, um, doesn't look good for a racist kind of period. Uh, you know, like you said, three years out and eleven seventy. Um, but would that be said, I could make a motion that we, uh, go with Staskin's recommendation to go ahead and shell the item and took it out of, of the. Not second.
Motion for Mr. Beas, second for Mr. Staskin. Any further group discussion? Take the vote. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye, with great reluctance, sit on this.
Word four.
From Ridley, aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item number nineteen, delivering an act on request for assistance by Aransas County for in-kind assistance for their Aransas County Workforce Development and Opera Nerd Center proposal to the Economic Development Administration Public Works and Economic Adjustment Program. I do have a citizen participation vote. Uh, Mr. Jeffrey Hutt, if you could find him.
Hello?
Unmuted.
Hello?
Yes, sir. If, if we could, if we could get your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is, uh, Jeffrey W. Hutt. I live out in Lamar. Um.
Could we get the address?
What I would like to do is I'd like to speak on this.
Could we get the address, please?
Oh, thirteen oh six Eighth Street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're up.
Um, I was present at the county meeting where they first started to, um, they, they got this passed again for the, uh, second time or the third time. Um, and I brought up the fact that within this, um, within the memo that's given to y'all, it says that ACISB already has signed a MOU with, uh, Del Mar. Now, an MOU, as you guys know, is different than a, um, a resolution of support. Now, I'm talking, so we're talking about something that's very much kind of a solid concrete wheel. What I'm worried about here is that, um, we're, our community is buying pick and poke. This is, uh, this is the second time this grant has come back to us. The first time it was supposed to go out with X amount of dollars and no matching funds, and now it's come back as a lower bid. And the reason it's come back is because, Mrs. Staus explains, the, um, grant application process is more competitive than they thought. So we're talking about grants here, so we'll get it this way. Aransas County has two grants that they're going out for, for the EEA. They're going out for the, um, Marina Grant, and they're going out for this workforce training grant. In Austin and Washington, Aransas County and Rockport has a bad name because we've all gone around saying, well, we estimate after Hurricane Harvey to give us grant money. And I think anybody who's talked with any of our government leaders will agree with this. Michael Cloud jokes about it when he comes to campaign stops here. It's an obvious fact. So you guys are really faced at this point with trying to, you guys had to decide, do we want to go with this Marina Grant? Do you want to go with this Marina District that has been the kind of focus for a lot of years? What are we going to do about the Bass property? What are we going to do about the Marina District? Or do you want to go with this workforce, uh, training program? That, they're now going to have to go out for a jet grant, which is a workforce training grant to make it work, so it's a grant upon grant. So this is what happens. If the Navigation District does not get its grants, the Navigation District is going to have to look at making money different ways. The Navigation District is going to be forced to look at turning Rockport Harbor into a commercial harbor. I think that's a great idea personally, but I know that the, uh, comprehensive plan, I know other things that y'all have looked at. Y'all see Rockport developing around a Marina and a harbor. So I like you guys, that's what I want to tell you. Tonight, you really have the choice. You're going to choose between this workforce training grant and the E, and the Marina Grant. And it's a real choice. It's not both. You can't have both ways.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. And, um, next we have Mr. Jatine Baka.
Thank you all very much. Uh, yeah, uh, congratulations. Uh, this is happening, I know this is your, my first time to say this, but congratulations on being a councilman. Would love to.
Okay, thank you. Now, now we have, uh, Mr. Jatine Baka.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you can stick your name and address for the record, then we'll start.
Okay, sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, council members. My name is Jatine Baka. Um, my address is two two four Reserve Lane in Lamar. Um, I am also the chair for the EDC, uh, just here to kind of address the, um, the agenda, item number thirteen, nineteen. Uh, EDC was charged, we started a committee, an explore for committee along the path of pursuing this grant. Um, in doing this, we originally looked at the airport property, uh, to build a workforce training center. Uh, I think initially we looked at twenty thousand square feet as a rough number, uh, for the square foot footage that would be required. And so some of the information that kind of has been twisted a little bit, that was an annuity building funding ground up that we were going to develop. Um, that was our take when we talked to EEA that, you know, right now, there were, they had some COVID nineteen funding, and because of this, we would not need to. Uh, so the, the application at that point was for, uh, almost six million dollars without a match, um, for a brand new building. And since then, a lot of things have changed. Uh, we've gotten back to, uh, the, you know, we looked at other options, other property development. Um, but then with the county having the Little Bay Primary as a micro hospital, when that situation changed, uh, I believe it was like Hurricane Ladder or, uh, June. When that situation changed, we had an opportunity to take off a piece of property that was existing that wouldn't take that much funds to develop, and so we moved our focus to that. That would entail asking a lesser amount of money from EEA. Uh, so now we went into the application process. We found out from EEA, uh, this month that we were going to need, uh, matching fund, and also, uh, we needed a drawdown budget. So we've done that and we've come to you to let you know that our application that we're going to submit is for a two point five million dollar application with a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, match. The five hundred thousand dollar match can be fundraised in one week, and that tells you the amount of support that this community has. There are others that are going to point to this thing, well, it started as six, four point five, three point five, but it started by decorporating a brandy building. This takes a building off the vacant building list in Rockport. And I think this is a great opportunity to redevelop this site for workforce training center. And we're asking, the county has approved it yesterday, and we're asking the City of Rockport to do an in-kind, uh, donation with its services to help us to get this grant. Uh, the in-kind, if you just look at this, it will quantify the amount that we can go after with the recovery of seventy five thousand dollars for the benefits.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Baka. Next I have Mr. John Jackson.
Unmuted.
But we can hear you. Stick your name and address for the record and start.
Okay. Well, I'll be right back. I'm from Texas. I think the team covered it pretty well. If you buried in when you had that honor bill. It was about to say that, I think I saw that the staff were recommending fifteen thousand. Uh, but then we remember about that, is a fifteen thousand dollar match for us translates to a leverage of eighty percent from, from, uh, EDA. So that would be a seventy five thousand dollar boost to our budget, which we'd like to do to try to put some more things within this building. But that has all been driven by the EDA, uh, not realizing when they put this thing out that we didn't know how competitive it was going to be, and every time we talked to them, the numbers got tougher. That, in the end, forced us to look at only one of the two buildings, Little Bay. But in close collaboration with Del Mar, they were happy with the fact we've got that one building. We can always expand in the north. So everybody's on, in sync with this thing. The, the county's got about twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in it. Uh, ACISB, uh, is proposing seventeen thousand. We have a temporary letter commitment from them will be, uh, formalized in the thirty ninth. In addition to that, Del Mar itself has put in another forty-five thousand. So there's eighty-seven thousand dollars of governmental interest that are already running this because why can't the City of Rockport be a part of us as well? So I'll, I'll rest there. Oh, let me say one more thing. It doesn't have to be cash, I think, which we mentioned in kind, and there's a number of things that the county's doing and the other as well that have to do with materials or labor or labor and fees or whatnot. So I don't think it's going to necessarily require a cash donation in kind. Plus, the match will not even be payable until twenty twenty-one over a two-year period. So it's, it's going to be spread out. Probably have a dirty mental impact on the budget. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Was there anyone else?
No, sir.
That's it, okay. I believe we had talked, Mr. Prue, about the commitment of fifteen thousand dollars in force donation, so not yet.
Correcting in-kind, uh, labor.
In-kind labor, and I believe, Mr. Donohue, you've been to the building and took a look at what they were asking for. They were, they were asking for, uh, help for interior tear out of ceiling grid, sheet rock installation, location loading, and possibly waiting permit fees.
And then painting.
And painting, that's correct.
Yes, sir. We walked the building with the fire marshal and our, our building official to take a look at the building to determine what it will take to get it ready to be occupied. And both the building official and the fire marshal were satisfied that the building is in a condition with, you know, just minimal construction of the interior. The exterior's already been sealed after Hurricane Harvey with the new roof, new AC units and other types of things. The interior is ready for remodeling, if you will. And that's what we were checking when we went through the building, and the building itself is in good shape.
Mr. Donohue, did you check the building after Hurricane Hannah when there was a big window broken out of the? When there was a big window broken out at the back side? It took about two weeks to get it plowed and ordered up?
Yes, sir. We walked the buildings and everything has been taken care of. And, you know, although that window did come out, there were minimal damage. A lot less damage, of course, than when they had the roof damage from Harvey. But both buildings are in what I would call fairly good shape and ripe for remodeling. They're very clean. All the sheet rock and everything has been taken out halfway up the walls. All the ceiling tiles and insulation have been taken out of the building. All the floor, most of the flooring has been taken out of the building. So the building is in very good condition for remodeling.
Councilman Prue, comments or questions?
Hi, everyone. This is coming from my, I don't know, I have you two from high school right now. Can you hear me?
You're breaking up a little.
Good. Okay. My comment is, I mean, this building, having a kid in high school and one that's going to be going to college here in a couple of years, I mean, it's something that, in talking to other families around here, it would be something really important for their kids. And easier, it may be cost efficient for them to have a better way of education and so they get higher paying jobs or they can, you know, have just, I guess it's, like I said, an easier way of getting to college around here. Our classes that will help them beyond just high school. Also, you know, we have a big retirement committee and they also like to take classes as well. So I think that can really be important for them. My one concern is that we were told that it was not going to cost any extra and now you're going to ask that extra cost. Is this going to change in the future? Are you seeing other brown roads coming in? Or is this pretty much it? My big concern on that.
Question for Mr. Baka, that one you asked.
I think, Mr. Baka, do you want to answer that question, sir?
Yeah, we don't foresee anything from what Delmar has said, that the program that they, they plan on, that they have forward. You know, like I said, it was 16, 20,000 square foot building we were really happy for. This is 16,000 square foot. The second building that we had, we're ready to kind of grow into. So by us utilizing the north building, I think they've got plenty of space to, you know, in two years' time, that's going to take to ramp up that program. I think they've got plenty of space. And also, the other thing that Delmar had added was that a lot of their other construction programs, whether that be lumber, electrician, or any construction related trades, they usually tend to have courtyard kind of setting, so it's going to be more outdoor. And so that will require classroom space. And so as part of this development, it also includes the four lots north of that building. I think they've got plenty of room to expand. And I don't think it's going to entail any more costs on our part of the city or the county.
Has, has Delmar talked about bringing their mobile training facilities in here? I know they've got a lot of self-contained units that they pull all over the area and train out of those. Are they contemplating employing those down there?
Yes, they are. They are. I was in a meeting yesterday where that was discussed in fact with workforce development solutions. I hope it's risky. That's part of the plan as well. There are no additional costs that I know of for the city at all. And even the county is going to be covered pretty well because Delmar company is going to be part of all the operations costs. So any of your questions, Andy, I don't think there's going to be additional cost for the city.
So let me put aside the merits of the project because I don't think anyone argues that it would be a nice thing to have. The question is, responsibility is, why could the city participate in this so how much? Would remind all the folks who are in the budget or comp that we were told the city is running super lean and dysanorexic. We are not adding new personnel on our budget despite our public works group being so overworked that Parks and Leisure is doing work for them in maintaining space that otherwise would be public works responsibility. My understanding is that $15,000 is essentially one-third of a full year's salary for a person employed by the city to do this kind of work. So you're talking about four months' worth of somebody's labor or some group of somebody's labor that's going to be devoted to this project, that's not being devoted to this project because we're already under staff and undermanned. This is, the EDC is making these plans. And good for the EDC. And believe me, I congratulate you on the, on the community response that you received. But it's a county project. The county is receiving the grant, or as a grant awarded. The county is owning the building and the land. The county is going to be responsible for our major maintenance of that building as the owner of the building. It's going to come off of the tax rolls, of course. So the city will have a big revenue to the county. Every citizen of the city of Rockport is already paying taxes to the county, which is going to pay for the county doing all of that. On top of which, the county is going to devote $20,000 in kind for the parking lot. I'm a little bit distressed as well as third board councilperson. Mr. Baka is exactly accurate that the analysis plan or protocol plan, because this plan changes, is that there is need of expansion because they're only getting one building instead of the two that they were planning, is to do outdoor education. And carpentry and welding was specifically mentioned. That would require a conditional use permit, which would require that whatever kind of operation happens there is conducive to its surroundings, which is a residential neighborhood. So you're talking about expansion being planned for power tools and carpentry and welding on a street that the other side of is a strip of homes. So the county, good for the county. This is not an LGC project that was brought through the government alliance that we are a member of, which is our conduit for economic development, as I say. They have now found this since July 6th. And back then, it was a completely different project and nobody was talking about matching funds. And I just can't see our way toward developing four months of a personnel's salary load to offer as part of this project when the county and therefore city of Rockport taxpayers are already contributing to it. Now, what the school district does is their own business. This is an educational program. And, you know, to the extent that the school district, which takes two-thirds of the tax money anyway, decides that this is a good program for them, it maybe makes some sense. They're in the educational lane, that's what they do. I don't see that it's our charge to do it. We've supported this program as well as the Marina program. You know, I'm not talking about withdrawing that support. I'm just saying we're not in a position to offer in-kind services in order to promote it and our taxpayers are already paying for it. I was hoping that we would reach this issue after the next agenda item, which is going to talk about our budget situation. But I would remind everybody that our budget situation may be, may well be extremely weak if we are having to pull funds out of this year's budget and next year's budget, who knows how many years' budget, in order to pay for things that were on the CO that were extremely critical that have to be done, but we don't have the funds to do it already. And add on top of that, four months of somebody's salary load to contribute to the program seems out of line for our responsibility for the city, for the city taxpayers.
Any other comments?
I understand what Bob is saying, but we have to look at, I mean, sometimes I understand like the fact, you know, county, city, school district. So I hate to, I guess what I was trying to say is, we need to be as one at some time, you know, and act as, we're one mind to all come to the same conclusion of what we're trying to do. And I think this project is, is going to be something that has to include offities to make it go off correctly. You know, it'd be different if it was like, I understand that it's, it's an in-kind obligation. We're using our personnel to do painting and demolition and sheet rock there, but... I think that it would, it would help out the kids with goals. I just, I, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say here. I think that we just need to get away from that part for this. I think it's a great thing that should happen and, but that's real obviously.
Anyone else?
I would just add that, I think one thing that I would say to this is that, yeah, you know, it's, it's a county thing, but like what JD has just mentioned, it's community that benefits. And I think we're all going to reap the rewards of this and we're all going to see the dividends that will pay out years to come from a project such as this. And I think everybody that donated to this, that when we went out and did the fundraising, realized that point and realized that it was needed. And I think that's why we're kind of coming to the city, to the county and everyone just to let those barriers down and say, hey, this is county, this is city. This, the whole entire community will benefit from this and it's going to be a beautiful year.
I do have one question, Kevin. On this, this in-kind donation, will this be done not during after hours, I'm guessing, during working hours or how would this be takeless?
Either way, it just depends on the, when the work is needed to be done. I don't know that they have a timetable yet. Mike, did they discuss this exact timeline?
No, they didn't. We discussed it with our department heads and let them know that the opportunity may be there for us to participate in this. And, you know, the, the first question was, is, you know, taking care of the city's needs first during working hours and such, and then possibly working after hours on that project for our in-kind donation.
I just have one thing to say. This is about benefit versus, you know, what we're going to pay out here. And in the, in the long run, to me, I just want to, why I want to know if it's going to cost more in the future. But I mean, training will produce taxpayers that will pay that creation back tenfold. So we have to, that future benefits us and a future benefits our city and a future benefits our youth, our, you know, our everything. So I just, I really believe that this project is a great project and we do have to work together. But again, the only thing that may be uncomfortable is it's going to keep adding money. I'm not disagreeing with what they're asking for right now. I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that I was asking.
Okay, council, any other comments or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Two.
Please, sir.
I have a motion, Mr. D. and a second, Mr. Jackson. We'll take a little call. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
No.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. I have number 20. deliberate on fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget.
Mayor Castle, this is obviously a lot of action that I would invite but on here mainly to initiate a special, with the petition that we received last, at the last meeting and was accepted earlier in this meeting. There were some items on that list to be funded that were pretty necessary. For example, the easements for the Key Level Bridge, being one of the key ones. And disrupted to the budget that we had already threw up at the bed. So I want to get the conversation started on what that means. We have time left on the calendar to make adjustments, either on the revenue side and or the expenditure side. Some of that decision-making will be informed by, driven by, some are discussions, detective session and whatever follows from that. So I don't think we really need a whole lot of discussion right now. But I wanted to get the seed planted that we may have to do some, some quick work following tonight. I didn't want to dive any, any fire that didn't need to be started without having some initial discussions about, you know, after we make some decisions on some other issues.
All right, yeah, this, this action, the petition, does put our budget in a precarious situation for a couple of reasons. We were looking for some needed, very, very needed project funding. City Hall, Key Level Bridge, drains downtown, police budget, that appears to be defunded now. The youth facility, some other things still there. So while we're looking at this, we need to come up with another approach to take a look at this, but we just want, yeah, this is not an action item. We just want to talk about it right now.
Do we need, might we go back into another workshop in the loop or is possible?
Yeah, that's definitely an option that we need to consider. I put in that tax table in the backup material for tonight just as a, just to provide some guidance on, so you could remember where we were earlier in the late discussion. Not as a suggestion on where we need to go, but to kind of establish some, some boundaries. You remember that we can go up to the de minimis amount of $500,000 without going to, without requiring an automatic election. So that's out there and you can see in the different columns what different rates generate and what the impacts, impacts are. If you want to look at, we discussed this during the budget workshops. You look at cuts. The only places, because where the most capitalized were in the certificates of obligation. The only place we can really make up any kind of significant expense expenditures is in personnel. That's eliminating people, preventing big changes in the other personnel line items. And you look at departments on the general fund side. You're looking at TD and Parks. The only two big departments we have. Other than that, you're looking at departments that are, can't, I'd say Parks is a big department. That's 10 people, not including the director. And beyond that, you're down to the streets, which is six. And after that, it's one of these suits. And nobody's, nobody's around here is clamoring for fewer police.
That was the, who's a lieutenant, unintended consequence of this action. Not sure how, how much of the background the community organizers took into consideration when the petition is. We did attempt to meet them. We offered to sit and talk to them, to talk about the impact of the budget. We offered to sit there and, and show them what we were looking at. what we were looking at as far as all the consequences were possible. But, uh, but I do respect the, the public's right to petition and vote. I just wish they would've come to us and sat down and looked at the business component, not the motions side. But again, they, they petitioned, we accepted it, uh, in the center general, but the... We'll go back to Mr. Donald, in the analogy earlier today, we were, we were talking about, we've been pushing this rock up very, very steep hill for three years now, working with our, our state and federal partners, crossing all the i's, dotting all the t's, meetings after meetings, we're open to the public, no one came to attend these. And as we right, as we get right to the summit, ready to push that rock over and start our projects, we find the people pushing above us, pushing against us, our citizens, and not all of them, a little over five percent. Uh, but again, I respect their, their ability to do that. I'm not sure what the motivation was, but I've got some ideas, but I don't know whether that... But, uh, counsel, any other comments? Again, this is not an action item, it's something we need to get up front to discuss.
I would have to, have to, we were, make sure, I know our facts and what we want to do.
Okay. Anyone else?
Andrea, are you done?
The, yes.
Oh, tell me this, 'cause I appreciate what this table says. If I go across, uh, the total revenue, the column that shows the de minimis full five hundred thousand dollar, uh, number generates seven and a half percent more revenue. And that is less than, that is more than increasing the tax rate by nine percent in the last column. In other words, taking five hundred thousand de minimis is functionally a nine percent raise in taxes over no new revenue?
Correct.
And that only gets us five hundred thousand dollars. Our budget was based on a need for new revenue to a four hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Uh, even taking the full de minimis rate of five hundred thousand is only gonna generate forty thousand more dollars and would be a nine percent raise in the tax rate over the no new revenue rate?
That's correct.
And the right of way alone is a single item in the certificate of obligation list. It's a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar item. So it's already a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the most that we would be able to get if we took the de minimis rate of five hundred thousand.
That's right.
So that if we were to go forward with the bridge project, we would have to forego all of the items for which our budget sought four hundred eighty, plus we would have to come up with another hundred and fifty thousand, which I guess comes out of our reserve fund or out of personnel costs. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And if we draw down the reserves, then that has an effect on our bond rating. So that as we live in a hurricane zone, we are already a little behind the eight ball with underwriters on bonds who look at the city like ours and say, well, how can I be guaranteed of the security of my investment? Ahah, I can look at a city like Rockport and it has built up a reserve so that it's capable of sustaining hurricane. If we no longer have that reserve because we're using it to pay for our rights in way, then our bond rating will be lowered most likely, and that means our borrowing rate will increase. Is that all right?
Correct, and, uh, this last bond rating for this issue, uh, our rating was affirmed. This time, it did not go down, however, uh, the, uh, the, the company, the San Francisco Fords, did make note that we have been drawing down on reserves and that was a cause for concern. So we cannot continue to do that without there being, probably be an, an impact tax fund and a downgrade in that credit rating. And as we say, that would lead to, uh, higher interest rate, which translates into more costs for our citizens. And I think we discussed last time, uh, just a quarter percent difference in the interest rate on this particular issue over the term of twenty years translates into four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars more cost to the taxpayers.
So if we were drawing down, see, it does not come up for a vote till May, which is the earliest it would be voted on if, for the items that would, you know, that, that would qualify, uh, maybe all of them. Then we would have drawn down on our reserves most likely by then and would be facing potentially higher rating over the next twenty years, higher, higher bond interest rating, I mean, because of our lower security rating. And the taxpayers would then be paying that over the next twenty years at a higher rate. And, and that's not to include whatever may happen before, by, right, the elections come November, which can also affect the interest rate, and has nothing to do with the city, or that would be on top of, over the city.
And were we to have another storm come through, and we could become any adult, you know, financial standard?
Which is what happened to Rockport in nineteen nineteen, Rockport got ended in nineteen sixteen, and I think he was more of on for twenty years.
That's correct.
And lost out, uh, you know, going to work with Chris Gates, yeah, although maybe that was a blessing, you know. Uh, let me walk through the consequences if we do not fund the right of way for Key Lagoon. My understanding is that if we don't fund the right of way, obviously, we can't close on them. If we can't close on the right of way, then we cannot go forward with our contractor to remove the utilities that are currently on the bridge, more underneath the channel, and bring them up into Key Lagoon. Until we have accomplished that contracting work, TechStop will not start the project. Currently, TechStop has already put off the project twice because of delays that we had. Uh, it's now currently set for January of twenty twenty-one. But obviously, we wouldn't make that if we don't pay the ROWs. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that TechStop stood up to take this project, as I appreciate it under some political pressure to do that, and simply for us in our plight post hurricane. It's not a state highway, they don't have to do it. It's not part of their charge normally. Because they build bridges all the time, they could build it for about two and a half million. But if the city had to do it, we're not bridge builders, we don't have economies of scale, we don't have contractors who we work with every day to do that. And it would cost us probably closer to four million to build the same bridge, and we were on our own.
The original FEMA estimate was four million for a temporary bridge. And started out at eight, and ended up, the total project included a temporary of about sixteen million dollars, which we could not afford to match on that. Working with friends in Austin, to call contacts, to call them, and get some favors, we were able to get this project brought to the attention of some key people in Austin, who sat down and got TechStop to agree to take it. I still don't think they want to take it, because it's a law, it's not their bridge. But they graciously accepted it, did the engineering, but this would be bid out under the Texas, uh, I'm sorry, under the TechStop Bridge Replacement Program, which we, uh, I mean, this was a high level decision, governor's level decision to do this.
And, and TechStop has been very good to work with.
Very good, they've been terrific, as professional as you want to be, they, they spin over back. They put divers in the water after the storm, we had divers in the water, Mike, about a month ago?
About a month ago, but I can read exactly the bridge. And I do wanna say...
So on the other hand, they, they build highways and bridges all around the state, and we have to be on a list for the next opportunity. We are currently, but we would lose that listing if we go forward.
Correct.
I, I do wanna mention that...
Some way, presumably, TechStop would be able to say, we have not lived up to our part of the bargain. Sorry, they're not interested anymore. But, but there's nothing that requires them to keep this on their list in perpetuity.
This, this petition also has jeopardized a two hundred eighty-five thousand dollar, a Texas Department Agriculture Grant that we all see as political capital on. After being told no three or four times, we're finally able to give to a commissioner, who recognized our plight, had some money, and committed the money to us. But because of this delay in their, their departmental, uh, regulations, the project has to be, uh, to, in order to be funded, it has to be completed in one year. And we've already passed that deadline, we've asked for an extension, but we were told last Friday, once we realized the impact of the petition, that, uh, they probably weren't gonna be able to help us without saying no, so just really don't count on them. Mike, do you want to say something?
Again, as I said it before, you know, we, we stand to jeopardize our relationships for the future when we, we literally have TechStop in mind statewide. They can only let so many projects within each region of TechStop statewide. And we've had this project in the queue for two years now. And each time that there's a letting on contracts, they're calling us and asking us where we're at with the utility relocation project, as to whether or not they have to take it out of that queue for funding. And we've had to do that numerous times with TechStop. And, and you may mention the fact that they, they could just put it down and walk away. I, I don't believe that they would do that, but we are holding up TechStop statewide with our inability to move forward with this project. And again, you know, all the, all the favors that we called in, everyone that we called in Austin to try to figure out a way to find a, a financially staple way to replace this bridge within our community that wasn't gonna handicap us into the future. We expended a lot of political clout and a lot of relationships in getting TechStop, getting TDM to the governor's office to come to the table and meet with us and figure out a way to rebuild this small bridge within our community. And, you know, you mentioned it before, you know, people in Austin and in Washington, you know, they're looking at us and saying, you know, we expended a lot of political clout to get you guys the help that you need. And, you know, I don't believe that they're gonna do it again if we reject the help that has been given to us. And plus, if we don't do it now, it's gonna cost our community a lot more money in the future. Everything that we've got on the table is gonna cost us much, much more in the future if we don't move forward and utilize all the opportunities we have, all the partnerships that we form, all the good interest rates that we're able to get, all these things. If we don't move forward with this, we're going backwards.
Okay, and I wanna emphasize, it's not just, uh, potentially lose the cash, the money, but it's also the loss in the political capital, which is, you know, those that worked here at the time, when we got, finally got TechStop to accept this bridge project, in this room where we're at right now, we had forty-two people that eventually came around the table, that included the executive director of TechStop, that included the chancellor of AMN System, the vice chancellor of AMN, uh, the provost. We had, uh, our state senator, our, uh, state representative. I mean, all those people were here, that didn't happen because they just happened to be neighbors. They were here because we pulled strings for them to be here. And that's happened not only in that project that are on City Hall, on the courthouse downtown, uh, Anchor Project. That comes out of cost, not in dollars, not in dollars, frankly, but in political capital. We spent it on those, and that came at the expense of other projects in the past, other projects in the future that we're gonna have to deal with, that we don't know back yet. And if we squander it by not going forward, people remember that.
The, uh, I have a question, actually, it's for Bob. Bob, I know that, you know, you, uh, well, to my least degree on, on Facebook, you, you know, you went out and, uh, tried to talk to petitioners while they were trying to sign. Uh, but did, did you specifically tell the organizers the consequence? I know you're telling us all these consequences, so we know, and you reiterate the, the consequences. But did you tell the organizers the, the potential, what could possibly happen whenever you were out there and speak to them? Because, you know, I've seen your name come up plenty of times in the talker.
I, I, I did, and in fact, I, they agreed to let people know that that was a potential consequence. And they included that cascade of consequences, or some of them, the most important ones, uh, with the petition that they were presenting with people. My experience was not very many people wanted to talk to me about the big particulars. They were there because they wanted to vote. And, you know, the particulars of the items were not so important to them as that they be able to vote on the bond. So, uh, so yes and no, I guess is the answer.
Yeah, I, uh...
I'd like to just take, you know, three or minutes to talk about what the bridge means, because we've assumed its importance. I think everybody understands, I'm not, I'm talking to my fellow council people, 'cause y'all know, it's the one way of access to Key Lagoon. Key Lagoon is eight hundred homes. Key Lagoon is twenty-five percent of the ad lorm tax value, uh, that provide tax revenues that run the city of Rockport. That's certainly a way on and out of the law. And Hurricane Harvey, because of the volume of water, undermined the pilings that hold that bridge up. It held up underhand, there's no additional damage. But the new bridge is intended to make that broader and more resistant. If we do get one more storm that's as big as Harvey, there's every possibility that that bridge goes down, in which case, there is no access, in which case, guess what's gonna happen to the property values of all people that own homes there? And all of that property value that we tax and that we use in order to provide services to everybody else in Rockport, a lot of which are second homes, so they're not taking a lot of services like, uh, you know, full-time residents. And they're even taxed more because it's not a home step. So it is a critical part of the city, it is a critical piece of infrastructure. And I don't see how, whatever other decisions we make, budget-wise or revenue-wise, I don't see how there is an alternative but to find some way to be able to move forward on it so that it gets built by TechStop.
I'll go back and, um, look at the numbers, who's holding itself on this unintended consequence. We have six thousand two hundred sixty-five active voters in the city. So in order for the petition to be valid, we had to have three hundred thirteen signatures. They turned in the petition with four hundred eighty-nine signatures. And I heard comments where they claimed to have gotten the required number of signatures on day one, but after going through the petition, we only had three hundred eighty-three verified signatures. And they, so they beat the requirement by seventy signatures. On day one, they had eighteen signatures. On day one, they had 18 signatures. Day two, they had 26. On day three, they had 242 verified signatures, which is well shorter than the number needed. So they finally got it on the last day. And the petitioners that's interested, Mr. Roland Reyes, Mr. Andrew Kane, April Clark, she's not a registered voter in the city of Rockport, Anna Marie Monroe, not a registered voter in the city of Rockport, Jeff W. Hutt, not a registered voter in the city of Rockport, Keith Allen, Candace Sargent, Kathleen Jackson, Cheryl Matlock, and Wayne Severston. These community organizers went out without having the facts or even presented the facts correctly. Uh, and I say that, I'll just come back in a minute, uh, to the people they asked to sign the petition. I had several friends and business leaders in this community to sign the petition. And I asked them, I said, "Do you realize what it's all there's, what we're, we wanted a chance to vote on the county courthouses? Now, this is City Hall, we can explain to you." Well, some of them said yes, but when I started asking them, "Do you realize that this is not defunding the police in Rockport, Texas? It's also defunding a youth facility, defunding a, uh, a bridge project downtown?" I got a call from someone in downtown merge that was furious that this project that would help them get the water off of South Austin Street and tie in everything downtown has been stopped by 5% of people. Actually, it's a little more than that. It's like 5.8%. Not quite 6% of people. So that's what we're dealing with. But again, we offered to meet with the organizer, the petition organizer. He said he wasn't interested in meeting with his, said he, uh, correspondents. He said it's happy with what we did. We do everything out front. Not even had a problem with that, with the, uh, City of Rockport. We were always willing to speak to them. And once he finished his project with the county in writing, he told me he was going to take this, he had no problem with the petition. I said, "Be careful. There's a fringe element out there that could try to hijack this from you." He said, "Oh, no, I'm turn off the comments. Don't worry. I like what you're doing." Then on the Wednesday, before our meeting Tuesday, I got an email that was actually due to this personal problem, family props, and quotes Christie. And I was given an ultimatum that we had to accept this petition or put it on the ballot, or the deadline was this Monday. And I was being pressured to call an emergency meeting on Monday so that we could jump through all hoops and get this thing in by four o'clock so it'd be eligible, be put on the ballot in November. Ballot deadline was November. Um, we didn't have time. Actually, we would have called a meeting. We could have called it early and voted, passed the certificate of obligation. But I felt that would have been slim. It would have been a little fast moving, politics, uh, wool of the public side, and we didn't want to do that. We're better than that. We're required to play by the rules. Our charter has a provision for petitions. That's how much we recognize a citizen's right to vote. What that calls for is a petition committee of ten registered voters meet with the city secretary, and she's got to take a look at the petition, look at the language, make sure that it's legal, it's efficient, and provide numbered and signed copy files for them, and give them the deadlines when the petition has to be back in for verification. None of that happened. They presented us a petition on Tuesday morning before our meeting. Our city secretary was in the staff meeting. Took all that long trying to get those, and has other duties to do also. By city council, we still hadn't had a verified number. So we didn't do anything but believe in the executive session. She finally came through and said it had enough signatures. But we didn't complete verifying those signatures till the next day. So, again, what's holding up the progress of the city of Rockport is a small group of our home citizens. I've gotten calls in the last couple of days from people that signed that petition and apologized because they didn't know what was in there. They didn't, they weren't told. And maybe it's their fault. I don't know. They weren't aware of what they were signing. One of them said, "I signed it just to get rid of being individually scary." You know, I think we spent enough time on this with anybody else in the other committees. On the budget. Love to talk about it. Anything else, counsel?
I'm good. Uh, I, I'm good. It's sad that, again, that nobody was around when all the, the budget was being worked on and all of this was being discussed because a lot of us are acting like this all just came out of the blue and didn't work so hard on it. And it's just sad to see this happen.
Okay, we had 26, 26 meetings discussing-
We discussed the City Hall project. This 2018, we discussed the City Hall project 25 times.
Twenty-five times.
Well, including item 27.
Okay. This is not an actual item. We'll move on. Item 21. Delivering an Act on the Resolution Authorizing Certain Actions, Including Proceedings in Eminent Domain to Acquire Easement or Title in Temporary Construction Easement, Certain Properties, in Action of Key L.A. Road Bridge Project. Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents to institute eminent domain proceedings and directing the city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings.
We have this as an exception item as well, so you may want to do that first and then-
So what we're going to do is we're going to move on to item 21 to further down the agenda. And move on to item 22. Here in Delivering on Stats of COVID-19 and New Finals Passes. The case council dropped significantly in the last week. We've got a couple of zero days today. We've seen zero, um, new cases. We've got a great movement up in recoveries. We hope that trend holds. We've got, uh, another holiday coming up, February, which could bring a lot more people to the community. Because other than that, we seem to be, we've gotten to a better time of COVID. Anyone else have any comments on COVID and COVID?
I think just started, you know, the numbers aren't going down, uh, which is great. It's actually something, um, but we still got to remember once, you know, it's not law. You know, so we can't get complacent. We just think that it's, it's gone. So especially when we're, uh, February coming around. You know, the last time there were the, I really think once the governor opened everything up, that's, you know, that's when we also was a little spite.
Anyone else?
I agree with Jamie. Yeah, it's, uh, it's been getting a little better, but yeah, we can't take it forever. Looks like we still have a way to go. Winter's still, uh, coming on and, uh, fall and winter, and we'll see how that goes.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Moving on to number 23, reports from council. Ward one, anything to the court?
Uh, I have a report. Thank you.
Ward two.
Uh, another report. Uh, I'll let you talk about the other things that, you know, there ain't anything else that's going on that we know that we didn't, so.
Ward three.
Uh, I noted that at the commissioner's court meeting yesterday morning, they authorized Judge Mills to sign the contract, uh, with, um, TCDQ to go forward with the Bay Shore, uh, Rebetton Project, which is good news for Key L.A. Road. I gather, Kevin learned more about this than Mike Conaho and I, that there are some additional issues that Hannah revealed or caused that will also need to be kind of dealt with along Bay Shore. But it's heartening to see some progress. Uh, I also wanted to, uh, you know, give a, add a way to Chief Stevens. I had a group of constituents who were concerned about an abandoned house behind them. They asked to meet with me. I suggested that the chief had affirmatively asked for code enforcement to report to him, uh, so that they could run and strengthen that, uh, you know, that initiative. And he met with them personally within a couple of days, uh, came back young with, uh, the code enforcement officer, uh, Angie West, and with, uh, Commander Sinclair and is working the problem. So good on the chief and the police force and, you know, hopefully, having code enforcement go through the police department will pay dividends.
Thank you. Ward four. Ward four, any comments?
Uh, yes, we have school start last week, um, including my two kids. It's going well so far online. Obviously, it's online for three weeks. And then it looks like a lot of kids will be going back. Um, it seems to be about a 50/50 ratio of who's going back and who's going to stay home for the nine weeks. My kids will be staying home. Um, so that was something that started last week. Uh, and then on top of that, I got some comments about the comprehension plan. So if anyone else in my ward has any issues on the mixed use, please email me because I would love to hear your input on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, to keep this brief, we've got more work to do, but this weekend, actually, the last week, and this is all through this past weekend, Mayor Potembe and I separately were, were joining the National Weather Service hurricane calls regarding Marco and Laura. Uh, we did that all weekend. And, uh, happy to say that as long as Laura doesn't love them, more west believe. It looks like we're out of, out of the area. But those calls are occurring at 10:30 and 4:30 daily. After that, we had an abbreviated form, a formation of the emergency, POC, Emergency Operations Center, where we had members of various stakeholders in the community on that call. And we were evaluating the information that we got from the National Weather Service. It was handled very well. Our EMC chief of the West did a good job, I believe. Mr. Cruz was on that. Chief Yaromos called from town hall. So, uh, weekend was a little bit shoot up, but we got through it. That's, that's about it. Unless anyone has anything, counsel? The city council will hold a consecutive session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in Item 24, Section 551.072, 2, consultation for returning on a matter of which the duty of returning to the governmental body will depend on disciplinary conduct of state or entity related to conflict with this chapter. Legal matters related to available options for funding hurricane hazard damage or property damage. Item 25, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. We deliver purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property right-of-way easement acquisitions necessary for Key L.A. Road Bridge Project. The time is 8:36, and we are in a consecutive session. The time is 9:51 per hour, and the city council's back session is delivered. Moving on to item 21. Delivering an Act on the Resolution Authorizing Certain Actions, Including Proceeds in Eminent Domain to Acquire Easement or Title in Temporary Construction Certain Property in Junctional to Key L.A. Road Bridge Project. Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents to institute eminent domain proceedings and directing the city attorney to initiate condemnation proceedings.
Mayor, and I think the staff makes the recommendation to move forward with counsel to adopt a resolution that the, uh, city of Rockport authorized use of power of eminent domain to acquire the properties for the easements on the Key L.A. Road Bridge. That's the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments?
Uh, I, uh, I make a motion that we go with staff's recommendation.
I agree.
I have a, uh, I have a motion from Mr. Villa. Is it second? Does that happen? Is that the second? Any further discussion?
Your word. I get it. Second. Come on, Audrey.
Uh, you have it.
So seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Any further discussion? All in favor. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 26. This table, Delivering Net款 Ordinance Authorizing the Sales and Delivery of City of Rockport, Texas, Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation, Series 2020, securing payment thereof by authorizing the revenue of annual net lorm tax and a pledge of certain surplus revenues to the city's waterworks and sanitary sewer system and approving and authorizing the execution of a paying agent registration agreement, a purchase contract, an official statement, and all other instruments and procedures related thereto. This item is based table.
Motion to take it off the table. Second.
A motion removed item dead by Mr. Cunningham and seconded by Mr. Villa. At this point, this item is considered moot because we accepted the petition. So there's really no action we have to take on this. I think that's all we do. So we're finished with this.
Good.
So we're finished with this item.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Villa, seconded by Mr. Sasso. The time is 9:54, and we're adjourned. Thank you.